All right, perfect. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. The Highland Park Board of Education has adequate notice of this meeting by having published the date and time and place of this meeting in the Home News Tribune and posted notice of this meeting. The Highland Park Middle School, 330 Wayne Street, Highland Park, New Jersey. Can we rise for the pledge, please?
Our pledge is to comply with the United States of America, and we are a republic that stands on one nation under God, indivisible, and free and just as well.
Thank you. Linda, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Versa?
Here.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Here.
Ms. Bull?
Here.
Ms. Simorusti?
Here.
Ms. Gowan?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Here.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Ms. Sherber?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Could I have a...Linda, are there any communications?
The board received emails on a very...a number of different issues. The walking school bus, the ID requirement, use of the public library facility, use of Honeywell, a board meeting conflict with the Jewish holiday, and the transgender policy.
Thank you. Thank you. And can we just quickly have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and executive sessions on September 21st, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Are there any comments? Linda, roll call, please.
Ms. Versa?
Upstain.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. At this time, we're going to move to the superintendent's report, but we're actually going to recess for the next 30 minutes to welcome Dr. Scott Taylor to this district. Yeah. And we're going to have some cake and some coffee, and everybody in the audience is going to have a chance to chat with board members and Dr. Taylor as well. So I don't know if you want to just introduce yourself and congratulations on starting the first week.
Thank you. Thrilled to be here. People ask me how my first...this is my fourth day. Fourth days will have gone. I have told them it has been thrilling. A lot of things that I am learning about in a hurry, mostly great things. And there's some things we have to still address that I'll be talking to the board and the community about in good time. And I'll speak to some of those things when I do my formal presentation after the reception.
Thank you. So with that, can I get a motion to recess?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the meeting is back in motion. Now, we're going to go to the superintendent...well, we're going to go back to the superintendent's report. So, Dr. Taylor, please.
Student?
Yeah. Sorry, the student...yeah, the student update.
So, thanks for the reception, everyone. I appreciate you being here. It's a real pleasure for me to have a chance to sit around the table with two students from the student body, so I'd like to have them make their report.
Okay. So, at this time...at this time, there are no reports from Irving or Bartle, but we do have them from the middle and high school. So, at the middle school, we had back-to-school night on Thursday where there was very high attendance, and there was a lot of praise of the coffee and brownies that were available during the meeting. At the high school, there was also back-to-school night on Wednesday where the National Honor Society helped out by providing tour guides and babysitters for parents, which is also praised. The high school has also introduced a new positive reinforcement system to help reduce tardiness. So, the way that works is students who are tardy more than four times are given an option to choose a reward for not being tardy more than 10 times in the marking period.
And the high school will be having Spirit Week from the 19th to the 23rd, and the theme this year will be classical movies. The homecoming dance will be on the 23rd, a Thursday, and then on the next day, we'll have the homecoming football game against Annellin. And DECA is currently creating a zombie walk, which is when students have the opportunity during the last period of the day on October 30th to walk around the track. And by doing so, we will help fundraise money for a Make-A-Wish project. And if anybody here is interested in donating, most of the students need to find sponsors to help raise funds for the project. And finally, the high school student congress group will be holding their haunted house on the 29th.
Okay. So, the other thing that Mateo and I brought up at the last meeting was the possibility of a board Twitter account, and today, we saw your email about the new Twitter handle, @HPSchoolsNJ. So, could you just tell us a little about that?
Sure. I'm actually going to speak about that in a couple of minutes, but I'll expand on that. Is that your report?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's our report.
Very good. Thank you. It's not customary in at least the districts in which I've worked to have students represented, so I really think it's a wonderful and relatively unique thing for us to do that here. So, I thank the board for being receptive to that. So, one thing I'd like to let the board and the community know is that when I make my presentation, I tend to walk around. I don't like to sit, so I'm going to stand and now go through my report. And I'm not used to using a microphone, but I'll give it a go. You have to. So, what the board and the community will be accustomed to at least one board meeting a month is my review of the district's goals, and we have four, which I'm going to share with you in a couple of minutes, and to give the board and the community an update on how we are working towards those goals. So, I thought it would be helpful for me just to point out to the community the four goals that I will be using to, in part, guide my work in the next year. These goals can be found on the district website. If you go to the About link on the district website, you'll see a thorough, detailed review of the goals, as well as action plans that the board and the district administration worked on. The first goal focuses on student achievement, specifically focusing on how we can work with our diverse community to be sure that all learners achieve. And this is a...this is going to be a high-priority topic for me. One of the things that I've been charged by the board to do is to be sure that all kids, regardless of their background, their cultural identity, have the same opportunities academically, socially, and emotionally to grow. So, I'll speak more about this at the next meeting. The next goal has to do with communication and outreach. And this, for me, is something which many of you, last Thursday night in particular, came to realize is a short-term goal for me. It's something that I think I can help the district with promptly. The third goal has to do with planning long-term. I did speak to the Board of Education during the interview process in which I took part that, at some point, we would engage in a strategic planning process. And I haven't had an opportunity to talk to the board at length about that, but I will soon, so we can work with the community as well to collaboratively develop further goals for years 16, 17, and beyond, and then action plans that support those goals. And the last goal has to do with professional development and making sure in my...as it relates to my vision, that our professional development focuses specifically on helping us get to those goals, especially that first goal, promoting achievement, academic, social, and emotional achievement for all of our kids, all kids. So, with that being said, it's not on my agenda, but I did want to at least point out that I will, on October...at the next board meeting, I believe it's October 19th, start to share with the board and the community specifically how the district is working towards meeting those goals. So, a good transition into the next item...actually, it's item number two on my presentation list is to speak about communication, which is one of the district's goals. I will be, as you can tell already, using all kinds of tools, social media tools, communication tools such as Honeywell Instant Alert, to not only support the goal, but address the many comments that the community provided the Board of Education when it was looking for its next superintendent. And I pulled out four quotes that come directly from the leadership profile I received when I was a candidate for this position, and you can see that they're...these comments emphatically call for enhanced communication. So, one of the ways that I would like to communicate all the good things that are happening in the district, as well as some of the things we need to improve upon and what we're doing to help improve those things, is to leverage our Honeywell Instant Alert system. Honeywell is widely used in districts all around the country for school information, to disseminate school information, present reminders to the community about back-to-school night, athletic events. In my next Honeywell, you're going to be getting a reminder about a cyberbullying workshop that the teen center is promoting. And of course, it's used for emergencies. I have to...this is my mea culpa. I have to point out that hindsight's 20-20. What I did not do a good enough job recognizing is that Honeywell has not been used previously in our community for anything but emergencies. So, when I sent my last Honeywell out Thursday night, I do recognize that it may have startled some folks who are not accustomed to using Honeywell for that purpose. So, subsequently, I sent a letter home today that points out my use of Honeywell. What I also did is indicate directions to the community as to how a parent or guardian can turn off certain alert settings, such as the setting I use when I send out my semi-weekly Honeywell messages, so that you don't have to receive them, but still receive snow-closing alerts and emergency alerts. So, I will be relying on Honeywell semi-weekly to present the things that you should all know about regarding the school district. And again, the information provided at home should help those who want to turn me off, which I will not be insulted if I am turned off when it comes to sending those Honeywell alerts out. Of course, as our student representatives pointed out, we are now a presence with Twitter and Instagram. The tweets and the Instagram posts that our parents and guardians have been getting are opportunities for us to visually relate what is happening. I think it's important to be mindful that parents and guardians don't see what goes on in the classroom. They sure hear about it. If you have a teenager, you may not hear about it, but you sure hear about things. I'd like you to actually see them as well. So, you're going to get a series of posts if you follow Instagram and Twitter, and in case you...you're more of a visual learner, these are the handles. The first is the Twitter account, @HPSchoolsNJ, and @HighlandParkPublicSchools is our address on Instagram. Many times, anything that I post on Instagram and Twitter will go straight to the Facebook page as well. So, with that, I'd like to just touch on a couple of more items. The issue of presenting identification to the main offices when visitors come to visit is something that I would like to take another look at. As the board is aware, the leadership team in the district came up with a protocol, which was on advisement from the local police department to collect IDs of any form and then hold on to those identifications. But I do feel it's helpful if we take a little step back from that protocol right now and revisit it. So, what I will be doing is bringing together a committee called the District Safety Committee, which will meet...it's going to be a standing committee that will meet probably three, four times a year. Our first meeting, which will hopefully happen within a month, will take on the issue of how to assure that visitors who come to our schools are vetted properly and that we, at the same time, though, are sensitive to their privacy and that we are equitable in and welcoming when it comes to having visitors come to our building. So, when the time comes, I will be reaching out to the Board of Ed to seek a representative from the board to join us on that committee, so we can all have a discussion about that. And then I'll report back to the board and the community to provide an update about that protocol. And the last two things I'd like to share with the board and the community have to do with some ideas I have moving forward for the purposes of keeping the board in the loop on certain matters. First of all, once a board meeting, once a month, I am going to be asking the principals to select a student who may go unrecognized, somebody who's not necessarily on a sport team, not in a club, but might be doing something in the community, might be an Eagle Scout or be...I'm not sure what the Girl Scout comparable...is it? Okay. So, we'll be definitely reaching out to those kids who we don't have a chance to honor, and we'll rotate. So, the first student who we'll spotlight will be from high school, and then we'll move to the middle school, then Bartle, and then Irving. And we'll be inviting the families of these students to come to the board meeting at the beginning of the meeting, so we can honor them. The principal will speak a little bit about the student, and then we'll take some pictures. And it'll be a nice chance for us to get a feel for what's going on in the schools beyond what these great students who are representing the student body on the board are doing. So, look out for that. The first student we'll spotlight will be at the next board meeting. And finally, I'd like to start working with board committees prior to board meetings, and that's something perhaps we can talk about. I think it's important that I keep the board committees in the loop about resolutions that are coming up on an agenda item. I do recognize that the committees meet on the same evening prior to the board meeting, but perhaps we can discuss if time allows. We're all busy. We all have busy lives. We meet a week prior to the board meeting. Not every board meeting, but at least once a month, so we can speak to some hot topics. Personnel Committee in particular is one committee I'd like to meet with soon, because we do have some personnel issues that I'd like to address. So, that's it for me. I don't know if it's customary for me to take questions at this point, but if it is...
From the board. From the board. Are there any board questions?
So, the...so, for people who opt out of the Honeywell informational alerts, that information will be available somewhere else to them, yes? Perhaps on the website or...
Yep. So, the Honeywell information is on the letter I sent home, as well as on our website. If you go to our website and select Superintendent, there'll be a series of options. One of the options is the Honeywell Update Alert page. On that page are instructions to tweak your alert settings. I'm also going to put the text transcript of the message on there. It'll be translated in Spanish for our Spanish-speaking population, so you can do that, and it'll be on Facebook as well.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a quick one. In addition to the identification needed to get into the buildings, there was also...are we going to suspend everything that was kind of put into place under that, or just that one component?
Good question. We're going to revert to what we've always been doing.
Okay.
Well, basically, not touch...
Because there was also talk of, you know, not being able to get in the building unless you have an appointment. There was talk of fingerprinting for chaperones.
We're going to stick with the process, which in most buildings has parents signing in.
Right.
In some cases, presenting identification, depending on the school. You know, one of the things we...I think we would all agree we need to do is make more consistent the visitor policy in all of our schools. So, that's where the safety committee comes in. Incidentally, on that safety committee, besides a member of the board, will be Officer Cribello, and then, of course, members of the leadership team.
Sure. Because there was also something about parents needing to be fingerprinted for chaperoning.
That's not going to be in effect, no.
Wonderful.
And that, again, I think collectively, we can decide as a committee how...where we need to go. And we'll hear from the police what the leadership team heard, which is what compelled them to put that protocol in place.
Yeah, I mean, it was interesting. After that happened, I kind of did an informal survey of different districts around the state, and there was everything from...ranging from what we've always done, which is just kind of sign in and get a pass, to districts that were going even further, and there were systems where you had to log on at home once you make your appointment, and then you get a barcode, and you can't get into the school until you get a barcode. I mean, so it really ranges wildly, but I did find that the districts that tended to do more things with IDs and things like that had actual security forces in buildings. They, you know, schools now have security officers stationed in their buildings, and that's when there tended to be more policies. Our setup isn't necessarily so.
Yeah, well, there are 600-plus school districts in the state, so every...you know, there's a reason why I think it's important for local communities to adapt their own...the policies that they like to their own needs. So, that's the direction in which we'll go.
Great. Thank you.
Am I...are we allowed to...
Yeah, absolutely, please.
Okay. So, what I wanted to ask is, in your presentation, you stated that you would use Twitter to provide parentcy opportunities to see what their children are doing in the classrooms, but do you have a vision for the Twitter page to be also used for, like, a way that students can get information, or will you just be using the Honeywell?
I'm hoping students are going to jump on the Instagram account. In fact, he'll follow back. Follow back. But that's my diplomatic way to say it. Don't count...you know, I've already had some students ask me if we would follow back. Yeah. I mean, I need to push up my followers, so I'm expecting, you know. A very delicately said. I'm not in the business of following. We're in the business of being followed. But that's...you know, I hope you understand that that's...you know, once I open that up, that window up, it becomes...can get a little chaotic. But I'm hoping...I'm hoping the student body really works through...I understand Instagram's the more popular social media tool right now, I believe. Yep. So... Don't expect Vine or, you know, or anything.
Snapchat. No, Snapchat.
I think not. I meant more like, would you be putting updates up for the student bodies, like information that the students could see on the Twitter and then...
That's a good question, and that's not something I've considered, but I'd be open to it, because my hope is that as much as I can have families join and follow us, I really...I want the student body to rally around the Instagram account. So, maybe what I'll do is reach out to you both during school, maybe during lunch or something like that. I can...we can have a little chat and talk more about that. I'll make a note to do that follow-up with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Anything else?
I just wanted to say that it was really great to see the step back, the safety change, the protocol change, because it kind of came from nowhere. And my question was, why, if you could, say, what information came to light that caused that change in the first place? Because, you know, it was, again, a little bit out of left field and maybe a little bit frightening.
That's a very valid question. So, I met with the leadership team about this, and they...our local police attend many safety seminars, and at one of the more recent seminars, it was strongly advised that they follow the protocol, which was then drafted. So, the leadership team took its cues from the experts and went forward. So, perhaps when we went forward, we, you know, hindsight's 20-20, we didn't realize some of the challenges we might run into, and that's why I think it's important to scale back for now.
Yeah. And I definitely wanted to applaud that. I think the committee is a wonderful idea, so I'm looking forward to hearing from them. And the student spotlight was another good thing that I wanted to point out, but I wanted to ask you if you had considered...in several other districts, they do informal performances from the chorus and other things that, you know, would bring lots of people out to board meetings that normally would not attend, and it might be something that, you know, would add to a task list...
We do that.
On a regular basis.
We do it probably almost...
We have not done it in quite some time.
I mean...
I can't remember the last one.
We do...we do awards for sports. We do awards for achievement, and we do normally around Christmas time at Irving School, we do a concert with the kids.
Are you thinking like a cabaret-style, somebody setting...I mean, seriously, somebody setting up in the corner and is that...
Yeah. No, no. It's more of a specific...you know, specifically at Irving, we did the pre-K around Christmas time and Hanukkah time. They come and perform a few songs for us.
It's also a nice way to visit other buildings.
Yeah.
You know, like, I've been to board meetings, say, and for instance, I went to one in Patterson, and they had it at one of their high schools, and up on the stage, as people were gathering for the meeting, was the jazz band. So, you know, jazz band parents came out to hear their kids. You know, it's just a way to, you know, build interest, get parents out that wouldn't normally come out, go to different schools, you know.
It's something that we routinely do.
I think it was something that I thought was a natural build on what you were doing, which I thought was wonderful, was to highlight some of the students that, you know, are quiet, don't get noticed, and aren't winning sports awards or, you know, that type of thing. So, it was just another addition to it.
I'll follow up with you, actually, the full board about that in the next...by email in the next couple of days.
Sounds good.
I have one question. This safety committee, I'm hoping that it will be comprised of a diverse group of people. It's just a wish. But I'm just advising, I think that would be really good.
Yep. Perfect.
I'll look into it.
No, agreed.
Something I'll look into.
Any other comments? Claire, can we have the curriculum report, please?
Yes. The curriculum committee...can you hear me? Is this on? Okay. The curriculum committee did not meet tonight. We all arrived here at 7:00. I just want to point out on the agenda, which it begins on the first page, number two is a program. It is called Link It, and there's a pilot program being suggested for the Highland Park Middle School. I think it's important for everybody to know that it's a pilot program. It's not going to cost the district anything. And one reason that we're doing it is because the RAC committee said the middle school must have some way of measuring students' technological skills. Is that right? Okay. The technological skills of the students. And so, this is a free way to do it. It's got a few different assessments, and they're aligned with the Common Core, so while it is more testing, it shouldn't be overwhelming. So, I just wanted to point that out. If you have questions about that, please come to the platform, and you can get them Number five is appointing Mr. Esteban to be the Spanish translator for the district, which he's done for many years. And that's basically all...oh, there's...one other item is that in the future, I believe, Dr. Taylor is going to put together committees of teachers, like a standing curriculum committee to be on top of the curriculum as we're going through time. And that's all I have to report.
I'm just going to expand on one thing. Item number two, resolution number two. The other reason why we're going to use Link It is because the middle school is a RAC school, Regional Assistance Center school, because of our status as a priority school at the Department of Education. We're required to institute some kind of benchmark. The district, I understand, I'm learning, is talking about a standard benchmark it could use. By benchmark, I'm referring to an assessment that is not internally produced. Usually, it's something which we have to bring in from outside. That could give us formative data on how students are doing on a long continuum of a year. Because I'm new, and I think it's important that the teachers come together with the leaders and really thoroughly discuss what kind of benchmark we want to use. For now, we should use something that is not going to cost the district anything, so we can satisfy the Department of Education's needs, and that's where Link It comes in. I have to credit Mrs. Osemier, the new middle school principal, for that. It's something that she's used in the past. So, when she met with the RAC folks who came, who visited from Trenton, she had a response that she was able to provide them. We are going to use a benchmark, and it's going to be Link It. So, if the board has questions about that, I'd be glad to elaborate.
I do have a couple of questions. First, I mean, I don't...I'm sorry, I don't mean to correct you, but it's...we're part of the Regional Achievement Center, and we're actually a focus school, not a priority school. So, and there's big differences between focus and priority, so I don't want to raise any more red flags that are already raised by our focus school status. Do we know who provide...this is software, I assume, or this is how the database is...like, who runs... provide, this is software, I assume, or this is how the database is, like, who runs the database, who has access to the data? Like, is it something that parents will be, I mean, one concern with any kind of program that lots of parents have is their children's data, and what happens to that data, who has access to that data? Will the company that has the access to the data sell that data, share the data? Like, I think we need a lot of those questions answered. I mean, certainly for me, before I can feel comfortable approving a program that's going to have access to, you know, I don't know what data, very often to comply with FERPA, we need to be letting parents know what data is even going to be collected, like, how much data on our students will this program collect? Is it just their name and student number, or is it their address, their social security numbers, their, like, what data is this company collecting?
I can get the answers to those questions from you in the next day or so.
Okay.
So I could email the board an answer to those questions.
Is there, is there a way we can postpone this until that happens, or?
It's, and if that's what's decided by the board, we can, we can manage, we can manage.
You can manage for the two weeks before we have that information?
The idea of a benchmark is you want to implement the assessment early enough in the year-
Sure.
So you have enough time to see growth, but we're only into the first month, and by the next, board will be in the first month and a half of the year.
Right, yeah, I mean, I'd certainly like more information on, you know, how much, how much data this is going to collect and what's going to happen to it.
I'll get back to you, the full board on that.
I'd also be curious to hear about the assessment that comes along with it. I had initially thought this was just a sort of a data collection program. If possible, I'd like to hear a little bit more about what kind of extra assessments are going to be added, like, what the benchmark will look like. Is it a full day of filling it in circles, or?
What I'll do is I'll prepare for the board a separate email that just focuses on this tool, and some sample questions, and if you'd like, I can send a link to the website, and you can go from there, so you get a full picture-
Fantastic.
Of what it is.
Thank you.
And then I encourage any specific, any individual member of the board who has a concern about that to call my office, and I'll be glad to flesh it out.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
I had the same concern, so I'm really glad that that was aired out. Thank you.
Any other comments? Catherine?
The Finance and Facilities Committee did not meet tonight. I would like to go over a few items on the agenda. Items eight and nine are donation of a camera from Donors Choose, and then HPEF grant, and we're always grateful for these donations that augment our budget and help the teachers with their projects. Item 10 is a new state funding that, again, we're used as a flow-through. It's not, it's not part of our budget, it just, it comes through the school and is given to the non-public schools for them to work on their security systems. Items 11 and 12 are for new picnic tables for Irving School. The old ones were really beyond repair. And item 15 is just something that the auditor requested, that we memorialize the cancellation of stale checks. Items on the addendum, the items 16 through 18 are related to the conversion of the one room to the robotics ESL room. We've talked about this a couple of times, but this has to do with electrical work that has to be done, so that both rooms have switches and all, you know, electrical outlets, all that's needed. And then, and fire alarm system, and we're using that company because they are the ones we are contracted for in general. And then items 19 and 20 are referring to the remediation of the mold at the middle school that we also have referred to before. These are quotes for the remediation. Linda, inform me that it should take about three weeks, that's what they're looking at, that we, work will be done after school and on weekends or holidays or whenever the opportunity arises. But that should be taken care of within the month, hopefully. That's it.
Are the spaces where the mold's growing currently in use?
It's all above the ceiling, and it's just on pipes above the ceiling. We have received assurance from the mold specialist who did the assessment that there is no hazard as far as health hazard at this time. It's been a very slow growth process, and we're just trying to, you know, address it before it ever becomes of any hazard.
Very good, thank you.
I have two comments on items eight and items nine. I want to recognize the teachers that took the time to apply for the grants that they got, and I'm assuming it's Ms. Brooke Baldizoni from Bartle, second grade classroom, who did Donors Choose. I don't know if you guys know about Donors Choose, but it is a great program, and it's only for teachers. So I'm an administrator now, so I can't use it, but I wish I had known about it, or they had had it when I was teaching. And then Mrs. Passachow got a grant from the Ed Foundation, which is great, and I think it's wonderful that we have different avenues available to support teachers and students' learning. So congratulations to those two teachers.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just had a question. Number eight, the camera. I remember that from the budget season. That was something that we had to actually take out, I remember.
I don't believe that this is related to that. That was, I think, at the middle school, and this is a teacher at Bartle School, I think.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So will that camera be used, or able to be used district-wide, or is that just for that classroom?
I would have to, I can get back to you, but I'm accustomed to grants such as this as being designated just for the classroom.
Okay, okay.
But if you'd like, I can follow up about that.
I was just curious about it, because I did remember that that was something we decided to take out of the budget, and then apparently, you know, there was a need for it, and I'm so glad that the teacher was able to get the money to do that. But if there's a need for it outside of that classroom, we could, you know, avoid another Donors Choose project. I know that, you know, it's wonderful that they can do that, but I find it a little bit unfortunate that we can't provide without using Donors Choose. So if we can share that with other teachers, that would be nice, but it's, of course, not, not necessary sometimes.
Thank you. Any other comments? Jerry?
Personnel did not meet.
Thank you. Any comments? Ann?
The Policy Committee did not meet tonight. I do have some items, though. Susan Odato has given me a list of the policies that we have tabled since the beginning of the year. A number of them are mandatory policies, and these are generally tabled because some member or other of the board has an objection to a specific aspect of the policy. So I guess one of the things that I would like to say is, in the future, if you are that board member, which is obviously fine, if you could follow up, either by sort of, you know, sharing with Susan Odato, so that she can share with the rest of the board, those changes that you might like to see, or the pieces of the policy that you find troublesome. In any case, a number of these policies are mandatory, and so it would be great if we could get them revised and on the agenda before the end of the year. The mandatory policies, and so, so the mandatory policies are 32, for the Personnel Committee, 3218, a substance abuse policy, two substance abuse policies, I think it's, it supports staff and faculty. So it's 4218 and 3218. And for the Curriculum Committee, there is 5200, an attendance policy, 5460, the high school graduation requirements, 5465, early graduation, and 2622, people assessment. There are other policies that we have tabled since the beginning of the year, they are not mandatory policies, it's possible that we can choose to not even pass them. I also have for the chairs of each committee, if you, if you have lost this at this point, yeah, this is, these are the, those sections of the policy-
Jiggle, jiggle.
These, those sections of the policy manual that pertain to each individual committee. So we all have, myself included, been a little lax about our policy review, and we're in October, so we need to sort of hurry up and get this taken care of. I think probably we won't get through the entire policy manual by the end of the year, but if you could turn your attention to those mandatory policies in your sections, that would be great. And we will also then have to have a meeting of the Policy Committee, so everybody, each committee has a representative on the Policy Committee, so that we can address the bylaws. Again, you know, we did go through the policy manual, as we always do, you know, just two years ago, so it's possible, you know, you shouldn't feel as if, I mean, obviously, if there are policies that you find troublesome, we should address them, but all of the policies have been looked at very recently, so there may be many policies to which there are no changes. You shouldn't feel that you, you know, have to make changes for the sake of making changes. Anyway, so that is my policy report.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question, Ann. The policies that are not mandatory, do you have the list of those that were tabled?
I do.
If it's too long, we can share it another time, but if it's not-
I think you should probably just send the whole list.
I will, you know what, I typed it up, so I will email this list to everybody.
Great, thank you.
And, Ann, I'm sorry, those tabled policies, we don't have to do before the end of the year? Is that what you said?
No, no, the mandatory policies that are, have been tabled during this year-
Right.
We should review before the end of the year. We should review all of the policies by the end of the year. The goal is that.
Okay.
I don't think we will meet that goal, so, so it's best to address at least the mandatory policies.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are we not going to go over the ones that are for first reading?
If you have any questions on them.
Yeah.
Oh, well, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
I mean, there's one that actually, we actually have to make a choice on. On 8550, there's a select one option, and this one I find remarkably troubling, actually. This is the outstanding food service charges policy, so it's, it's referring to if a student is coming to lunch, does not have money for lunch, what is the cafeteria staff to do? And the options that we have, if, so if the student's parent does not make full payment, so a child is already in arrears, if, if the student's parent does not make full payment to the principal or designee by the end of the 10, 10 school days, the principal or designee shall again contact the student's parent to provide a second notice that their child's lunch or breakfast bill is in arrears. If payment in full is not made within one week from the date of the second notice, the student, and then we select one option, will not be served school breakfast or lunch, as applicable, beginning the eighth calendar day from the date of the second notice, completely not acceptable. Or option two, will be provided a basic lunch that will contain the essentials in balanced nutritional selections as prescribed by the Bureau of Child Nutrition Programs, New Jersey Department of Agriculture, blah, blah. If we have this problem, a kid gets fed, like, bottom line. To me, I don't want it qualified, I don't want it quantified, I don't want, the kid gets fed, and we work it out between the adults. But in my mind, never should the penalty fall on a hungry child.
Yeah.
Ever. So I don't want either of those options.
So we can just say a full meal will be provided? What's the, what's the equivalent, what's the meal that, what's the meal that we give? I mean, I think option two is what you're saying.
It's a dollar eighty.
Yeah, option two is, I mean-
At the current time-
Is option two like a scaled-down lunch?
No, I don't think-
At the current time, they're given a standard school lunch.
Right.
That sounds good.
I would like to alert-
That's what option two is, I believe. No?
Right.
Go ahead.
Yeah, basic lunch.
We can call it a standard school lunch.
Basic lunch is the standard school lunch.
Okay. So what appears on the calendar, the food calendar?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which includes a milk, a main and a side, or whatever.
The essential components of fruit or vegetable, and a certain number of proteins or grains.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so it's not restricted in any way. Okay.
But I would like to point out that we have several students who have balances over $100.
Right. A hungry kid is a hungry kid. We can't not feed a child. I won't, I won't, I will not have Highland Park be a headline somewhere that we refused food to a child.
It's happened in another district recently.
Yeah.
May I suggest that-
I mean, and not that that's the problem, the headline's not the problem, don't misconstrue that, you know, the problem would be not, not taking care of a child in our charge.
Would it help the board if I took a look at this with the leadership team, along with Mrs. Hopeley?
Well, I think there's two things here. I think Darcy's right, that we're not going to not give a kid food, and a standard lunch is, or whatever you want to call it, is going to happen in this district, no matter, no matter what. I think the second thing that you should be looking at is following up with unpaid's.
We have been, we do.
Well, I mean, and that's what the policy outlines. It outlines a procedure-
Yeah.
For handling that, but what I did notice is that it seems to fall primarily on the building administration, and doesn't ever escalate it to the central office administration. So, I mean, personally, I would love it if Scott took a look at this one and see if, you know, you have some other thoughts on this. I certainly don't want to, I don't know, if this is the, you know, the kind of standard policy on this, it's not even mandatory.
Well, is this something which we can table, or is this a mandatory policy?
It's not mandatory, no.
It's not, yeah, we can table it.
Yeah, okay, so I might recommend we table it, and then have the leadership team take a look at it-
Okay.
And then I can back-
Yeah, I mean, it would be interesting to see, like, how much of an issue is this generally, if we have a couple of kids where it's $100 here or there. I mean, obviously, this is not an ideal situation, that we have children that are not being fed, but then those families clearly need some other sort of follow-up services. Maybe that can be part of the policy, is what other services can we provide to these families if they're not able to meet these basic needs for their children? Then, you know, I don't, I'd certainly like DIFIS to be one of the last resorts in a situation very often, that just exacerbates.
Yeah, I understand the concerns.
But that's part of the policy, you know, it's part of the policy that, you know, after two calls, we're then calling DIFIS, so.
We'll be mindful of those, or input, nobody meet, okay.
Great. Thank you for that. I can say that, on a personal note, forgetting lunches is not something that my kids normally do, but when they do, they're given what I would consider is the second, a basic lunch, so not the standard lunch, so not a hot lunch. They're given a cold cheese sandwich. That's what's been happening. So it hasn't happened in recent past, because we've not forgotten, but when it did happen, that's what had happened.
That's because they don't like cheese sandwiches, so they're gonna-
Maybe not, but, you know, it's better than nothing, and I appreciate it, but it would be nice to get some answers to.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think that's-
I thought that had changed, like, two years ago. Has-
Okay.
When, when was the last time your child reported getting a cheese sandwich?
This was when my seventh grader was at Bartle, so this was at least two years ago.
I know we had addressed that issue, and actually, we, for practical reasons, we decided not to continue that practice.
Okay.
And we are offering them a regular lunch.
That's great news. Thank you.
Cool, okay.
And then there were a couple of just kind of clerical issues with a couple of the other ones. I mean, Lynd, I could give you those on an aside, if you don't want to do it now, or?
That's probably better, since this is first reading.
Is that all right?
Well, I would, I would think that the board would want to-
If it's just periods.
Just cler- just clerical.
It's periods, and yeah.
Okay, if it's just like punctuation and grammar?
Yeah, it's, yeah, well, it's, words are wrong, kind of thing.
That's fine.
I'll give them to you after.
Any other comments? The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and reserve this time for your comments. Please state your name and sign in. There should be a thing up there.
Good evening.
Julia Dewhurst, 188 Dartmouth Street. My first comment is, if you want me to come back to these meetings, you need to lower the air conditioning. Just saying. I want to welcome and congratulate Dr. Taylor. I couldn't be happier and so excited, as I spoke to him earlier, and Jerry will agree with me on this. This makes us feel as it was when we went to school here, so that's a good thing. Also, in regards to the Honeywell, so happy, I know I brought it up here three years ago, and Ellen and I would personally like, could the PTO meeting for tomorrow night for the high school be blasted, because we have no one coming. So, those are my two little perky comments. Now, less than perky. The reason for my public comment tonight is to discuss or mention how I feel about the leaving or the dismissal of our interim, interim director of special services. As a parent of special needs child, the only reason I even know that there was, I'm not even sure what the right word is, a dismissal of Mr. Shalala is because I work in the district. And I'm only really bringing this up is because I feel like in the past year and a half or so, we're talking about transparency and communication, and I just feel like, as, as a special needs parent, that I didn't get the same respect as the rest of the community was getting on other topics we're being very transparent about. And I know I'm not the only one that feels this way, but I just think it's very important. There, I also have seen no board motion of Mr. Shalala's leaving as interim, but I did see the posting on July 22 of that position for the full-time position of the director, and the deadline for that was August 7. I also have seen that we are now hiring a consultant for two days a week. I had the pleasure of meeting her the other day. She's very lovely. She's very lovely. She did mention without me, I did express that I was a special needs parent and also worked in the district, but she actually did inform me that she was in no capacity working as a director and that she was there to help with observations and mentor the child study team. So I was just concerned about, for me personally, what the rest of the capacity of her job would be. I guess just as a concerned parent that not only that we have not been informed, but there's been no direct communication with the staff within the buildings either. And I think it's serious, the special ed staff hasn't been informed, the nurses haven't been informed, the power professionals have not been informed. And that position oversees those departments. So on, you know, my comments here tonight are not to be accusatory anyway, I just concern, you know, I don't, I don't even know what did or did not occur between the interim and this district. None of that matters to me. What greatly matters is, I don't know, just the way you communicate to your entire community, not just one part of the community. We're a small district and it's always mind-numbing to me, the lack of communication. I don't understand it. It's just an ongoing, seems to be an ongoing problem. And especially in a department that is in charge of our most fragile children, it's just, I rely on our special services, I don't want to say daily, although I think Elaine would probably say almost daily, and it's just so important that they be informed and I be informed, nurses be informed, we're one team. And I just, I don't understand it. That being said, I just want to know, it saddened me. And I'm just, I'm not really looking for an answer tonight, I just wanted you to know that I wasn't very happy.
Well, Scott, I think you know...
That's it.
I can say that your concerns are extremely valid and I have the same concerns from all kinds of...
You know, Sars.
And so, let me share with you and the community and the board some of the things that are already happening. I'll be meeting with the consultant tomorrow to learn more about what she was tasked to do prior to my coming on board. Today, I actually had a meeting with the superintendent of the Middle School Ed Services Commission, Mark Finkelstein, who is going to be assisting us to audit our special education program. That's something that the board approved at the last meeting to do. And we are also in talks about potentially working with the commission, and I'll be talking more to the personnel committee of the board, about having them help us recruit the strongest, highest quality people out there so we can hire the best person available. That being said, we have an immediate problem. And the immediate problem is we, we have to bridge the gap between now and when we have that person come on board. We, I already have been drafting a timeline to start the selection process and then appoint somebody as a permanent and then have that person actually start, assuming whoever we bring on board might need to give 60 days' notice to his or her district. That, again, I'll share with the board personnel committee likely next week. So by the next board meeting, I can hopefully give you even firmer details about what we're doing. I'm going to be taking upon myself to do the search for the, another intern. I'm likely going to be looking for two or three retired individuals. Again, I'll be getting input from my, my peer at the Ed Services Commission, because they have a vast network of those good people. On Friday, I'll be meeting with the Educational Services Team, all the child study team members, as well as the secretaries in that office, to give them even more details. And I'd rather follow the protocol I'd like to follow, which is first speak to the impacted faculty, then of course speak to the board, and then I'll present to the full public what we'll be doing. But I can tell you that it's something which I have immediately begun to address, because I clearly recognize the problem. So I hope that at least gives you a little better feeling going forward.
Breath of fresh air. Love that, thank you. And also, is it possible that some communication just can come out from the district just expressing to the parents that, I don't know what's the right word, hey, we're in a transitional period, or just that explains it? I mean, I'm not, you know, the most vocal parent, I'm also not the least, but there's so many parents, ESL parents, you know, language barriers, it just is nice to know.
I could consider, there's a way for me to target my audience, I can, I can consider sharing with the larger community what I'm sharing with everyone tonight.
Correct. I just want people to feel reassured that you're working on it. If I wasn't here tonight, I wouldn't know that you're working on it, that's all. And I'm thrilled, so thank you. I appreciate, your response was wonderful. And thank you all, just so nice tonight.
Thank you.
Right. Scott, could something go out that's like along the lines of just kind of like a little bit of a history of what's happened? Mr. Shalala is no longer physically in the district, this is, to tell parents, but to tell parents who to contact. I think part of the issue that Ms. Dewhurst is addressing is parents don't know who to call. Like, if you have an issue with your child, with your special needs child, who do I call? Who is responsible for what? I think that's the piece that's missing right now, is that those parents haven't been told what has happened, what is happening. And so I don't think you need to have all the details right now, but I think the parents need to know who they can contact.
I think that's particularly true, thank you, Darcy. Because we're down, CST member Mary Wickens is no longer here, she's leaving soon. And, you know, there's been no notice to affected parents about that. Everybody's wondering, what do I do? What do I do? So if that could go out soon, that'd be fantastic.
Cool, thank you.
Hi, Ellen Leibowitz, 250 Grant Ave., Highland Park. What a refreshing superintendent's report. My goodness. I mean, Dr. Taylor, your intelligence, your experience, your enthusiasm, your energy, your kindness is shining through. And it is so welcome. Thank you, Board of Education, for this great hire. I have not been this enthusiastic and optimistic about the future of our school district in the 17 years our family has been here. So this is fabulous, thank you. It was also very refreshing to hear Irving and Bartle mentioned in the student report. That's great. Can you share how that process is going to work, how we're going to get that information to the board meetings?
They've been getting it.
Great. I haven't been, I haven't been here a lot. Fabulous. How does the process work?
So they normally speak with the principal, I don't know if you guys, these are our new student representatives, so this is one of their first meetings. Go ahead.
Sure, so we can actually take your question. So the way it usually works is that Mateo and I send emails about a week before the board meetings to the principals of each school. And then they reply to us with things that they want to highlight from the school, and we include them in the report that we give here tonight.
That's excellent. I'm really, really glad to hear that. It was also, oh, no, no, I already did that. Two announcements tomorrow, as Julia mentioned, is the first middle school, high school PTSo meeting of the school year. It's seven o'clock in the cafeteria, in the high school cafeteria. Dr. Taylor will be on board along with the building principals, who will give a report, and we'll get to talk with them about any issues we have in, related to the middle school and high school. And Dr. Taylor will be addressing the topic of looking ahead to the strategic planning process and its potential impact on the middle and high school programs. So we're really looking forward to that. Also, we have a tentative date. It's not at all confirmed, but we do have a Board of Ed election coming up, and we're going to have a candidate tonight, the tentative date. I can't emphasize that enough because we have a long way to go before this is confirmed, but we're looking at Tuesday, October 27th. So if you could save that date and we'll get the information out as soon as possible, as soon as we can get it all confirmed. Okay? So tomorrow, middle school, high school PTSo, and the tentative date for the candidate tonight, and we'll have a moderator and all the candidates there, we hope, will be Tuesday, October 27th. Also, both, both events at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Monique Coleman, 407 Lincoln Avenue. And I too want to echo my welcome to Dr. Taylor. I'm a new Highland Park resident myself, you're not apparently, from what I understand, but you are new here, and I was also impressed with your presentation and very glad to hear the goals that you are going to be addressing. And I know these are goals that came out of the search committee. I want to take this time to do two things. The first is to announce an event that's going to be happening that a group that I'm a part of is hosting in November. November 16th, the Highland Park Parents of Students of Color is going to be hosting a book reading and signing of a local Highland Park resident who's an author and a parent and a parent of color, also a member of our group. His name is Fahim Nasir, and he's going to be doing this event at the Highland Park Public Library at 7:00 PM. And our group has been working very closely, I know, with the board. The district has been very supportive, so I do want to take this opportunity just to announce it to the board, the public here. We will distribute the information out and we would love and appreciate the support to be continued. It's an opportunity for parents who, as you know, are diverse, maybe underrepresented in different areas of leadership in the town and in the Board of Ed, to get together, support each other, to advocate for our needs and for our students. So we can, we really would appreciate your continued support for the events that we hold. And the second thing I wanted to say, which I noticed in the discussion here, is about the Linkit program. My experience, it was a little bit of a red flag, I must admit, and I did have to, I was taken aback a bit, because for me, the Linkit, and I am an educator in special education, I go to various school districts and I work with particular population of students. And to me, the Linkit program is just an assessment. I didn't know about all of this other sort of data collection sort of roles that it fulfills, but my experience in the schools has been that it is primarily an assessment tool. And the way that it has been used in the district that I work in is that for middle schoolers, starting in the sixth grade, they take a fall and a spring. There's an A and a B for the exam. So we're talking about somewhere by the end of September, the kids are already taking their first formal standardized test, right? And now it's done wholly online unless you have some diverse special education students who need alternative assessment. And it is definitely aligned with the core curriculum, but it is another assessment, full-blown assessment. It does take quite a bit of time out of the classroom instruction, and there is some lead-up to it that is required to of the teachers. In the seventh grade, what I've noticed with districts, what they're doing now, is they're taking three sections of the Linkit. So there's an A, B, and a C. So now we have three different time periods that they're taking this exam. So that's why when I saw it here, you know, it is what it is. I understand in this system now, the state's requiring some form of assessment, but it's really not just the benchmark. There's follow-up, and it's not just one time of year. So you're talking about, and I've, I've been through it, I've seen it, that kids take, let's say in the spring, they take their park and then they're following up that park with the Linkit, with their final Linkit. And it's very, to me, as a parent and as an educator, I really have a problem with that. And I understand that you have to do what you have to do, but I would think in Highland Park, I think it's fairly progressive as a district. And I would like to see possibly, since this is just a pilot, to, if the district would take a look at how this pilot goes and then maybe consider some other options. Maybe there's some more creative ways of assessing our students that does not have to require another online standardized test, similar to the park, because that's what this is, okay? I mean, it is, I know, a way of internally kind of assessing where students are, and particularly in relation to the actual curriculum teachers are teaching, but I think we should think creatively, and I think this district has the potential to do that. So whether that's the Curriculum Instruction Committee, whoever that would be, part of the leadership team, I would even, my vote would be, you know, maybe there's some others, but for some kind of committee that really looks at bringing creative ways of assessing these students. Because I think this is a district that seems to have been advocating for something beyond, right, park. And again, Linkit, really, you're, you're bringing in really another assessment. So I'm not sure if everyone is aware of that, but I would like to bring that to the board's attention formally, and I'm glad it's just a pilot. So I hope that after the pilot's done, we can really think about other ways of assessing the students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Buffy Wild Greenberg, and I live at 1600 Cherry Street in Harman, too. My comments tonight were going to be about the identification policy, and I am very pleased and I'm very grateful to Dr. Taylor for being so considerate and thoughtful about this and taking a step back. I'll still share these thoughts because it sounds like these things are still being discussed, especially with the formation of a committee. I was also asked by Dr. Nora Krieger to read a letter on her behalf to the board, and since I promised to do that, I will still do it. But before I read her letter, I'll just say that as a parent of a young child who will be entering Irving soon, I agree with the concerns that she voices in her letter about the new ID policy. I recently visited Irving for a meeting about my son and was not permitted to enter the locked door until I stated I had an ID. My ID was confiscated for the duration of my visit. I immediately thought of the people who would be denied entry because they forgot their ID or did not have one. This policy did not make me feel safe because it does not make us any safer. In fact, it's unclear if, one, there were any safety incidents that prompted such a policy, and, two, if there were such incidents, how this policy would have prevented them. On a somewhat related note, I had also heard about the new requirement that chaperones on a school field trip must submit to fingerprinting and criminal background checks, which it sounds like that's also being dialed back, which is great and, again, greatly applauded. Again, since these things are being talked about, I'll still share my concerns, both as a parent and someone who's worked in the criminal justice field for some time. Safety is often the justification offered for these types of policies. It's an easy response rooted in fear and the endless what-ifs a parent can conjure up. But this policy of criminal background checks and fingerprinting of chaperones only serves to make those who are undocumented and/or have a criminal arrest or conviction unwelcome in our school community. It pushes parents and caregivers out of the schools when we should be working to invite families into their children's educational lives. It should also, I'm sorry, our country, which has the highest incarceration rate in the world, has subjected the millions of Americans with criminal justice involvement to a so-called civil death, denial of voting rights, denial of government assistance, and legalized discrimination in employment and housing. And in the case of our own school district, denial of participation in a school field trip. The requirement that chaperones undergo a criminal background check and fingerprinting is not rooted in what should guide our policies. We should be guided by research, facts, community discussions, compassion, and the belief that a criminal conviction or arrest does not mean someone has forfeited his or her right to be a present, loving parent. And now I'll just quickly read Dr. Krieger's letter, who's a former member of the Board of Education. "As a former member and officer of the Highland Park Board of Education, I am writing to remind all of you of your responsibilities and roles as members of the Board of Education. The Board of Education is responsible for making policy, approving policy, and guidelines for implementation. Until a policy has gone through the Board of Education, including public input, it is not approved for implementation by school administrators and staff. The letter recently sent out by the administration with rules for visits to borough schools, including requiring ID to visit a school, was not discussed by the board nor voted on as a policy by the board. Our schools should be welcoming places for parents. This does not mean that outsiders should be wandering the halls without anyone knowing they are there or the purpose for which they are there. Of course, visitors need to enter through the main entrance of the school, and in most schools, including in Newark, the main door is the only door through which you can enter during the day. We should not be sending messages to families that you are not welcome in your tax-supported schools, and we will make it as hard as possible for you to visit. That is what the new requirement says and what some of the administrative policies independent of this letter have been. As a teacher and educator, I visit many schools, including schools in Newark, where there is a high level of worry about who is coming into the building. In Newark's largest elementary school, with a population close to the level of our entire enrollment, when I visit, there's a security guard who makes sure that I sign in and state where I am headed. In other schools that I have visited, in other districts in the state, I am given a badge with my name and visitor written under it before I am able to go to my destination." "To me, the changes, on top of being illegitimate at this point, send a particularly harsh message to the parents and guardians of our youngest students at Irving, whose families should be encouraged to participate in the life of the school as fully as possible. Remember that we are dealing with three- and four-year-olds, five-year-olds, and six-year-olds at Irving. Research has shown that at these ages, we set the tone for how families and guardians relate to the schools and their children's education. These draconian rules indicate to parents that the people who oversee and who work at the schools do not want you to participate in the education of your children, that they want you to stay out except for when they want you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anna Porell. I live at 304 Becker Street, and I want to second what other people have said, extend a warm welcome to Mr. Taylor. We are very pleased to have you here. We are confident that under the leadership, the schools will get where we want them to be, where they need to be, and that's going to be for everybody. I just, it's, what I'm going to say is very obvious. I just want to say communication is a two-way street, and, you know, I can see that you're very technologically oriented, but we must remember, a lot of people are not connected. A lot of people don't have smartphones. I don't have one myself. A lot of people don't have access to technology, and that's the people we need to get to. That's, I think, our most important task as a community, for all kinds of reasons. I hear there's people who qualify for free and reduced lunch and that don't apply for a variety of reasons, lack of information, fears, all kinds of fears, so much fear that they won't even get close to the street, they won't attend barbecues. So, we have to deal with the situation, so it's important that we diversify the ways we communicate with people, that we try to, I don't know, have meetings in person, maybe through, I don't know, churches, synagogues can be useful in, because they provide, you know, a safe space for people who are otherwise scared to speak to people who represent administration. So, I just want everybody to be aware of those circumstances, these people are here, and whether, you know, we want to admit it or not, and it's very important that we include them in our conversations, because otherwise, things will remain as they are. You know, access is also, access to information, and lots of people don't know where the, that the district has a school, has, they don't know about the district webpage. There's people who don't know where the middle school is. You tell them, oh, there's an event, you know, we have a barbecue at the middle school, and they don't know where it is. So, we have to realize that and have a clear sense of the demographics of the town if we want to be truly effective. So, that's what I wanted to say today. And also invite everybody to come to these people's, Highland Park Parent Student of Color events. We are meeting tomorrow, unfortunately, it's at the same time as the middle school, high school PTO. I apologize for that, it's hard to schedule, but if you can't come, just send suggestions. They're very informal, very friendly meeting, very open meetings, and we've been successful in getting people to speak. I think that's something that hadn't happened. It's a group that has only existed for less than a year, but we've gotten, you know, we got people to speak that had never done it before, and I think that's a great achievement. I'd like to have this as a goal for the district and a goal for the town. There's also the community that doesn't have, there's a lot of people in the community that don't have children in the system, but they feel connected, they feel the children in school are their children. Also, we need to talk to them in a variety of ways. I know you'll do that.
Thank you.
Anna, I'm sorry. I just wanted to ask you really quickly, where are the meeting? The meeting tomorrow is...
I'm sorry, so, again, I'm not stating things well, you know. Yes, meetings are usually at the Reform Church, and they're at 7:00 PM, same time as the middle school, high school PTO meeting. But we, you know, we meet regularly, so if you can't attend, it's okay, you'll come to another one. And I apologize, I put a Facebook announcement, but I didn't send an email, so some people might not know. Small, large, we, you know, we gather and we talk.
Thank you.
Rebecca Chapman Smith, 1200 Becker Street. You did touch on this, Dr. Taylor, but I was...
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
How's that?
Perfect, thank you.
But I was asked to read the letter, so I'll just go ahead for the record. "Dear Highland Park Board of Education, I'm writing to you today about the recent changes to security at our schools. I really appreciate any policy or procedure that helps to protect the students and staff in our district. I do see some changes that concern me, however. I have children in Bartle and the middle school, I have a nephew in the middle, in the high school, and a niece who graduated in 2010. In all of that time, I've seen changes to security procedures come and go. Rarely did I feel that the children were unsafe or that my fellow parents posed a threat. It wasn't until last year that I heard that there were changes made to the drop-off and pickup procedures at Irving that put the children at risk. Hopefully, those procedures have been reeled back. When the letter came from the principals about entering the schools, I recognized only one significant change. Now, when you enter a school, you must provide an ID, preferably photo, and leave it at the office. This sounds good to most of us, because most of us have an ID. If you know anyone, or if you are someone who doesn't have an ID, you look at things a little differently. In Highland Park, we have a significant immigrant population. Some of them are probably undocumented. Their children and grandchildren attend our schools. Like any kid, they need to be picked up when they're sick, and their parents want to meet with guidance counselors, buy plants at the plant sale, and attend class parties. Asking them for an ID would be humiliating and frightening for undocumented parents, grandparents, and childcare workers. What happens to students whose parents are too fearful to make an appointment with a guidance counselor or teacher because they don't have a valid ID? I think we have to ask ourselves, what are we trying to do when we ask for an ID? Is it keeping us safe? What is the real problem that we're trying to solve? Or do we actually consider the parents in this community to be a threat? Are we employing common sense? Is this in line with how we want to be as a community? The other security change that I noticed was that parents and guardians who wish to chaperone the Camp Bernie trip must be fingerprinted and have a criminal background check done. I feel comfortable openly discussing this, because I've never been fingerprinted and I don't have a criminal record. But what if a parent does? We are talking about the parents on your walking school bus, or who you see at the ice cream social, right? What if a parent got caught with marijuana when they were 22? What if a parent was thrown in county for two days for drunken disorderly 20 years ago and has been sober ever since? What are we saying to these parents? We're saying, if you are one of those people, do not apply. We don't want you. That is what we're saying. Don't participate in what your kids are doing. And these parents will tell their kids what exactly when they say, "Mom or Dad, why can't you go to Camp Bernie?" What about this keeps our kids and our staff safe? What are we trying to accomplish? Does this show common sense or compassion, or reflect who we strive to be as a community? We want our staff and children to be safe. A Pina Free School District would keep some kids safe from very real danger. A health teacher at Bartle, who would teach kids going into puberty, that what is happening to their bodies is completely normal, helps keep our kids safe. A SAT counselor helps keep our kids safe. A healthy menu in the cafeteria keeps our kids safe. Parents involved in the schools and in their kids' education keeps our kids and our staff safe. I hope the leadership in the Highland Park School District will consider our community and what is really safe. Thank you. And that was from Jenny Tru...
First of all, the, I'm really glad that this policy of security stuff has been rescinded and is going to be reevaluated. As someone who works, worked in law enforcement, I really objected to it, and as someone who worked with criminals specifically, excluding parents from hanging out with their children because of these old convictions, as Jenny TruBecca pointed out, is really detrimental to the child and actually to society in general. It's really, it's a really hard thing to balance the safety of children with the needs of the parents and the kids, but unless someone's a sex offender or has slit a child's throat or kidnapped them, I, you know, I think it's something that really needs to be looked at very carefully. In terms of taking people's identification, whether they have or have not, I mean, you know, I find it extremely offensive. I'm the parent of this child, coming to see this child, and I'm somebody with multiple IDs up the wazoo. So, I just, I don't understand why I need to present an ID to see my child or to meet with a parent. I'm not there in that capacity, I'm there as a parent. So, whether I have ID or I don't, I think that shouldn't matter. I'm the child, parent of this child, this child is, I'm the parent of him or her. With all of the prison-like things that are happening in the media these days, with all of the shootings and everything else, we're not looking at getting rid of the guns or whatever. That's not what we need to do here, but what we, but we're all reacting to this, we need to keep the kids safe, which we totally do, but not in a police state, not in a police state. This is the United States. So, I really hope that the committee thinks about what it's doing and about how they enforce the, how they adhere to the safety of our children and enforce the need for some kind of control over who or who is not inside the building. Regarding this Lincoln thing, I don't know anything about it, other than what I've heard tonight and what I've read, and I will freely admit, I'm one of these opt-out kind of parents, and I'm opting my kids out of this one, too, because, you know what, enough of this. Do they ever get taught? They spend, seems like, to me, they spend half their time preparing for tests, taking tests, analyzing the post-tests, and I just, come on. I understand you have rules you got to adhere to, and I know, I don't know what the answer is, I'm not going to pretend like I do, I'm just some kind of nitwit parent who doesn't like her kids getting tested too much. So, that's how I feel about it, and, you know, do what you got to do, but my kids are opting out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Melanie McDermott, and I live at 330 South Third Avenue, and I want, I came out tonight primarily to show support and appreciation of our new superintendent, welcome Dr. Taylor, and just because I could, and I find, once again, I can't pull myself away. Seriously, I'm not being, so, my remark, my issues I'm raising tonight are maybe not earth-shattering, but they're part of instruction, and I thought I'd take the opportunity to just give some feedback as a parent of now two high schoolers. So, three quick comments. So, the first has to do with class sizes, and I do have a question about what our policy is, but, so, my daughter is in the freshman class, which is a particularly large class. She has an honors biology class of 31 students, okay? This is a class that has labs. She has a Spanish class that's based on conversation, Spanish honors III, that is 28 students, and she has an honors algebra II class that is 29 students. So, can I ask someone if they, I thought we had a upper class size policy, does anyone remember if that's the case?
We do. It's in the policy, I don't know if it's on my...
Yeah, I meant to look it up as well, but I'm...
Yeah. We have a whole, I mean, we have a policy called class size. That I can assure you.
Right, okay. Could you all take a look at it? And I apologize that I wasn't able to look it up first, but I'm pretty sure, and I, she is a particularly large class, but I just wonder, you know, what are, what is our recourse in that regard, and, you know?
The previous superintendent did speak to us about the increase in class size, especially in the AP and honors courses for this coming year. Right, and the AP bio part is the other, it's one of the, like with AP Lit, after, offered every other year, so...
Right, but this is freshman biology.
Oh, this is on freshman biology.
Freshman honors biology. So, I mean, you have to take biology, everyone has to take biology, they have an honors section.
I thought, yeah.
Some of it could be a function of the subscription for honors classes, but it's also, I think, a function of a bulge class, and those classes, it's well-known that that is a large class, so that's something that really needs to be planned for. So, I just wanted to flag that concern. My son is a senior, and he was really looking forward to the opportunity to take electives his senior year, and he had taken all of his requirements so that he could have the choice, and he signed up for race, gender, and ethnicity, a journalism class, and an astronomy class, and he was psyched, and this is a young man who's not thrilled about being in classrooms most of the time. So, not to whine about my particular kid, but I raise it because some others may, none of those classes were offered. And when I followed up on it with Mr. Lassiter, I understood that the first two were undersubscribed, but I wasn't given what the cutoff was and what the, you know, calculus is for determining whether it's worth it to offer. And astronomy, which Jessie had counted on, because I guess it's been offered for many years, the particular teacher was retiring, I think she wasn't offering it again, it wasn't pulled together, informal poll of just kids we know, I don't think it was undersubscribed, I think it wasn't offered. So, they said, Jessie, why don't you take accounting? And the other class, it was finance, something, something. Now, I, a lot of kids are preparing for their futures, and they may be into it, so I'm not casting aspersions, I think it's fine that it's offered, but my son is not into either of those things. He was then going to take three art classes, the guidance counselor worked with him, you know, a senior applying to colleges should really not be taking three, anyway. So, we worked out something, and maybe he can do it independently, but I wanted to raise that, because I think that we're a small district, and it was really the first time I felt, you know what, did I leave my kid down, let my kid down by staying in our public school districts? Because I know that if he went to a large school district, and certainly to private school, I have friends in, you know, other states, Massachusetts, where it would blow your mind what these kids can sign up for. And so, it's really something in balancing, you know, academic challenge, diversity, appealing to kids who maybe are not, just dying to take every possible AP class, but want to follow their interests. And something, and we have, every summer, I think all of us know, as parents, I do not understand why it's so late breaking, you know, when you finally, the kids finally get their schedules, and anyway, so just wanted to raise that. Finally, I wanted to challenge our district, remind our, and tell Dr. Taylor, that we are the proud district with all of our schools enrolled in Sustainable Jerseys Certification Program, which is something that we share with a number of other districts, and we've received over, Irene, I think, over $16,000 worth of grants, competitive grants, that our teachers and students and had, and with great parental support, Irene's the chair of that Sustainable Jersey Task Force, or Green Team, whatever they're called. So, awesome. However, not a single, same school in our district, nor did our district, apply to be, receive certification, which is the follow-through, and which the School Boards Association, there will be awards presented, and all the schools that have been certified will get recognition. And I know that's something that we're more than qualified to do, and I applaud the efforts of the Green Team, and I encourage the board and the administration to, because it requires some effort to go online and to put up the documentation, so it's something that, you know, staff support and everyone will make a difference on. So, I look forward to four schools and our district being certified maybe within the next year. So, thanks very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Melanie, I have a question.
Sure.
Are there people at each school in charge of this initiative?
Yeah, Irene, you can speak to that better, but each school, in order to sign up and be registered, so we're all registered, there has to be a Green Team at each school, and there's a teacher, I could tell you who the teachers are at each school, but I don't know, you know, relatively how active they are, and how much, you know, how many parents, there's certain parents, Irene being the chief, and they really carry the water for the group, and like I said, the teachers have to take their own time, do all this uploading of documentation and whatnot. So, it is something that we could possibly provide them some, I don't, you know, some time and space to do, and, you know, meet during school time, I don't know, there are ways probably of making it easier to, because you do the sustainable actions, and Highland Park's doing a great job, but then you have to document them, and that is just a little bit thankless until you do get the recognition that our district deserves, and then the challenge to reach further and higher, and some guidance, as well as grant resources on helping us, helping us get there.
I'll just quickly add that I had the opportunity to attend a Sustainability Teams meeting, I think it was Monday, yesterday, and if you go to our Facebook page and actually click the link, that'll take you directly to the, to the site, as you pointed out, and this is a chart that indicates the points that we can receive, so check it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
I looked up the class size policy on the website, and there are, it doesn't stick...
I looked up the class size policy on the website, and there are, it doesn't stipulate any numbers or grade levels or anything. It says that the superintendent shall prepare guidelines for class size, maximum limit shall take into account the subject matter type of instruction, so.
So, yeah, I, I mean.
Right in your lap, unfortunately.
I, I mean, it, we did authorize him, or he did tell us that he was going to increase class size for this year due to budget constraints, and specifically in the AP and honors is what he identified as areas, so.
So when we have the budget processes coming here, I don't know if that's a level of detail that, you know, below what rises to the radar of public comment and what gets presented, but I do think when trade-offs are being made, as they always have to be the budget time of year, if that could be explicitly highlighted, and we realize, okay, this is the resources it would take to bring on the extra teachers to not have class sizes of 31 and a laboratory-based instruction, and then we knew, okay, making hard choices of what else doesn't get funded, I think those kinds of things tend to happen, you know, further down the line, and I think most of us would agree, if it's instruction, that's gotta, and teacher, student contact hours, that's gotta be right up there at the top of our priority list.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other?
Ms. Reese, it's in 227 Benner Street.
I just wanna follow up on Melanie's discussion, what the points that she brought forward. For some time, we have been asking for a really serious look to be taken at how placement is done in our schools. There are many parents of color who are very concerned that their students are being squeezed out of honors opportunities, and if they don't go to the schools and fight for their kids, they don't get moved. And so by sheer number of people in the classes, there are kids who are being not recommended for things that they are eligible for, and should be eligible for, and that the, the students are really losing out on the education that they are entitled to based on the work that they have done in their classes, looking at people's report cards, looking at how they have performed, not, you know, judging based on a single test score on a single day in terms of placement, making the criteria clearer. I know that we've had community members who have come up and talked about that on many occasions. Melissa Newman has spoken about the need for more clarity in the process and for clear guidelines that will show where those cutoffs are so that parents and students are aware of them. And I think that we, this gives us an opportunity, having a situation in our freshman class where we have in a large population, to really take a look at this and see what can be done to make sure that there is better opportunities for all of our students who are in our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dan Miladnik. I live 216 Graham Street, and I am speaking as a teacher. Just gonna make this brief. I just wanna say that we're off to a great start. I just wanna say that as a staff member, I'm feeling very good, and I'm excited about Dr. Taylor coming on board. I've had other, we've had other people in the past come on board and say, we're gonna come out, we're gonna meet everybody, we're gonna, we're gonna get, I'm gonna speak with all of you. His first day on the job, he was in my classroom, and then I got home, and my daughter said, I met the superintendent today. And, and then, just the other, just past week, I was doing lunch duty, and I was speaking with Ms. Caitlin Brady about, we were actually talking about technology and some questions that we had, and some ideas, and in walks Dr. Taylor, and so we said, hey, let's talk. And so right away, he, he starts talking about, you know, the possibility of putting a committee together, and it sounds like he's got a lot of committees that you're gonna be busy with. And he sent out an email to us, it was just a, one night, with just a short little video, but it was very inspirational. It's something that, we haven't gotten something like that, you know, in the past from a superintendent. So I just wanna say, it's a great start, and thank you. Thanks for being here.
By the way, Michael said you were in their class too.
Oh, I should've said he was back in my, I'm sorry, I should've added, he was back in my class today, too. And I think, I think that's good. No, it was, it's good. Any other public comment? I think there's no public comment. I'd like to move to board action items. Claire, can we have the curriculum, please?
Yes. I would like to move items one through seven on the curriculum.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna move two, though. So you're gonna move three through seven.
I'm gonna move one, and then three through seven.
Correct. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Linda, roll call, please.
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yes.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Ms. Bull?
I move items one through 15 on the finance agenda, and then 16 through 20 on the addendum.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Linda, roll call, please.
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
I think actually.
She has to abstain on her.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I skipped Mr. Roselwitz. I apologize. Mr. Roselwitz?
And when, Ms. McFadden needs to abstain on number two, four.
Right, sorry. My name is on there.
No, thirteen, four.
My agenda isn't working.
And thirteen.
So thirteen and four.
Yeah.
I'm abstaining on those two.
Busy woman.
Otherwise, yes.
Lot of travel.
All over the state.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes, on everything but four, no on four.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Ms. Versa?
Yes, I would like to move items one through seven on the first.
Second.
What about eight?
Oh, sorry, eight, one through eight.
She doesn't like volleyball.
Any comments? Linda, can we have the roll call, please?
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yes.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
I'd like to move the policies except for 8550 outstanding food service charges for first reading. Second.
Any comments?
My only comment would be that at some point, I'd really like us to take a look at 5339, which is screening for dyslexia. As the parent of a child who's dyslexic and attempting to get services for her in this district, I've found that we are most likely not in compliance with a lot of what is stipulated in the policy.
So can I ask that we move it for first reading and that you?
Yeah.
Comment on the policy for the next meeting?
Absolutely, and I'll, maybe Scott and I can touch base between now and then.
Is your concern the policy or the implementation of the policy?
Implementation.
Right, okay.
Can I ask one question?
Yep.
I'm just trying to figure out where 5615 came from, suspected gang activity.
That's a recommended policy that we update from stress as may. So it's something that we are.
Yeah, it's a policy that's been in the policy manual, and we actually, believe it or not, we, we have had issues with this.
All right.
I believe it.
Using what we're doing, I, I don't wanna stall anything, but I'll, I'll take a closer look at it and then forward any comments that I have before the next meeting.
Thank you. That'd be great. Roll call, please.
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yes.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. There is no president's report tonight? Is there any old business?
I have something on old business. I don't know if you guys remember, at the last meeting, I asked Sharice to explain about the Highland Park Parents of Students of Color BBQ. That was, I don't remember when it was, was it a Friday?
Yeah. Yeah, last Friday.
So I, I was really excited to go, and I got there, I think about 5:15, and I went there with commands from my 11th grade son to come home with a plate of food for him. I thought, okay, I will get you a plate of food. And I got there, and I went over to the food table, and Anna was standing there, and I was like, oh, I guess they haven't done the food yet. Oh, goodie, I'm, you know, just on time. But the food had been served, and it was gone, and I don't remember, did it start at 4:30 or 5?
It started at 4:00.
Okay, it started at 4:00. So within one hour, all the food was gone, and there was, food was ordered for, what, 200 people or 300 people? 150 people. So there was more than 150 people there. It was really.
Or 100 really hungry people.
Well, I don't think it was that. I think it was, there was really a lot of people there, and I thought that was really great, and I commend the group, and that was really the only downside, so I didn't get to bring a plate of food home for my son. Oh, and the other downside was dancing. There was no dancing, where apparently I had missed it because there was a, not when I was ready to dance, so. But anyway, so thank you all for who worked on that. I thought it was great.
Thank you. Turn it up. Good.
I mentioned a couple times, and the board has voted on a resolutions that we submitted to the New Jersey School Boards Association Delegate Assembly, so I wanted to report that on Friday, this past Friday, October 2nd, I participated in the resolution subcommittee meeting via video teleconference, which was a whole heck of a lot of fun. I don't look very good on a computer screen on a video conference. It's not pleasant to have to look at that. And the meeting went very well. I presented testimony. Dr. Jonathan Hodges, who's the president of the Patterson Board of Education, presented testimony as well on behalf of our resolution and support of our resolution, and I'm happy to report that the resolution subcommittee did approve our, our resolution, so it will be presented at the delegate assembly, which I think is on November 21st. So this is a resolution that the board approved regarding to language provisions that Governor Christie inserted into the budget in the last two years, which sends more funding from our district budget into the charter school budgets, up, in addition to the money that they're entitled to in the Charter School Act. So our district over the past two years has overfunded the charters to the tune of 80-something thousand dollars, and, you know, that's $80,000, as Scott put it in an email to me, that is a, like, master's degree teacher with benefits. So that, it's not an insignificant expense. So I was very glad that the New Jersey School Boards Association saw fit to approve our resolution. However, they did change the language. Our language was very specific towards asking the New Jersey School Boards Association to provide, to put language in their policy, asking the governor not to do this again, not to put this language into the budget. New Jersey School Boards changed the language to say that NJSPA believes that any change to charter school funding made by the state should be fully funded by the state directly to the charter. And while that's not the language we wanted, I'll take it, and especially if it means that in the future, New Jersey School Boards will advocate on behalf of not only Highland Park, but districts across the state, to say that if you're going to continue to fund charters at a higher rate than they are afforded under the Charter School Act, then please, by all means, go ahead, but take that money out of your budget. So just wanted to let everybody know about that. So I'll let you know after the delegate assembly on November 21st. And I do wanna say that the delegate assembly process is not a process that I think we've ever really fully participated in, let alone actually submit a resolution to, so I'm very glad that our board is now actively participating in this, and I wanna say that that active participation is, is based on me really learning about New Jersey School Boards Association, really learning what, how their policies and procedures work, how boards, individual boards can impact those policies, and part of that is done by attending the New Jersey School Boards Association workshop. And I just wanna express my, my befuddlement that, that while board members are, are encouraged to attend workshop, and we're told meeting after meeting how we can attend workshop, we are statutorily able to attend workshop and have those, those costs covered by the district, which are minimal for, you know, the potential service we can there then provide to the district, that some board members don't see that as, as advantageous to the district and have actively been voting down those agenda items. So I just wanted to say that I, I think our district needs to be more actively engaged with New Jersey School Boards, not less, and that workshop is a tremendous way for us to do that, to make connections with other districts. This is how I can, you know, get to know Dr. Jonathan Hodges of Patterson, who's also, you know, impacted by this. This is how we can meet other, other board members in other districts that can help us advocate not only for our students, but students across the state. And next year, I hope it's not just me and Michelle attending, but I hope we have a whole delegation this year, Scott's attending with us. I'm thrilled about that. There's actually one, one, one meeting we're gonna, the three of us are gonna attend together, which specifically addresses ways that districts and, and communities can work together to work within the 2% cap. So it's, we're going there to learn, and we're going there to learn, to bring things back, to help run this district and help save this district money. So I think a $500 expense for us to go to this workshop is well spent.
Is there any other old business?
The new security policy that Scott is walking back for now, is that old business? New business? It's new to this meeting. It's old.
It was never brought.
I'll go ahead, and I'll go ahead and talk about it, since it's, it's old as of this particular time period at night. I also, like, like several commentators, applaud Dr. Taylor in walking back the policy for now and having some community input on it. I was approached by a community member who did not want to be identified for reasons that will become obvious, who wanted to express some specific concerns about the policy, and I'd like to go ahead and read that letter now, sort of as, as background information that I hope the committee will eventually use when it decides what to do next. So here's the letter. "I am writing this letter as a response to the change in policy," which she thought was going to happen at the time, "in both entrance, in both entrance to schools as well as the Camp Bernie policy on criminal background checks. I have asked me to read this letter on my behalf as an undocumented graduate of the Highland Park school system and as a child of a parent who was wrongly incarcerated. I realize that many of you on this board and many in the listening audience may never realize the struggles of undocumented families or of families who have been through the justice system in the same way that mine have. I do, however, hope that you all realize that access to free public education, as I had an opportunity to receive in Highland Park, was one of the greatest achievements for myself and my family. There are basic day-to-day struggles that families like mine must face. However, the opportunities and access for themselves and their children in the schools continues to be a source of great strength and, most importantly, hope for us. I fear that prohibitive policies like the ones recently adopted and now walked back adversely target and affect families like mine. We don't have much of the requisite paperwork requested, and in the case of the Camp Bernie policy, would fear personal shame in disclosing some of the information asked for in the chaperone policy. My family, like others, are often in constant fear of separation and deportation. We are subjected to daily shame in every move we take. Although my family and I work hard and pay taxes, it's a daily struggle to have to constantly look over your shoulders. Creating an environment in the schools that creates a culture of fear and retribution does little to promote inclusion of families like mine. I can and will always appreciate the need for safety measures in our schools and feel the prior visitor in chaperone policies, which are now going to be in fact, in effect pending the, the new committee's decision, that those prior policies were a wonderful way to both promote inclusion in our district and also ensure the safety of our students and staff. I would ask that when implementing policies, that you take the time to listen and understand your student and resident body. Highland Park's greatest strength is its diversity and willingness to embrace its neighbors without barriers to this inclusion. I would ask that our schools continue to do the same, and I'm sure this, this person will be relieved to hear that the policy is going to be reconsidered, and I greatly appreciate it as well. Thank you."
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other old business?
Actually, sorry, yeah, one more thing. At the last meeting, I mentioned film screening that I've helped to organize, luckily for me, with the help of the NJEA and the Middlesex County Education Association. And I just wanted to remind people about that event. It's gonna actually be a week from tonight. It's, registration actually starts at 4:30. And that's so you can get there and sit down and have a lovely free dinner on behalf of the union. And it's actually, we, the district did send out a flyer about that. Israel was nice enough to do that before he departed. And it is on the district website. So if you go to the district website, you go to the Flyers tab and you go under the District Flyers tab, you'll see it there. There's a flyer called "Defies Measurement." So you can find out more information about that film screening. I highly suggest that people check out the flyer and hopefully come and attend the event.
Thank you. Is there any new business?
Yes. There's an item on the agenda that was well received, I was happy to say. It's Teach and Affirm, which unfortunately I cannot access on my computer, so I had to bring it up on my phone. And Teach and Affirm is, it's a group of different advocacy groups that was put together. And so this is just a plan that we can follow as a district to gain accreditation of a type. And this is to make our schools safer for the LGBTQ community in our student population. And so what this would entail would be changing some items in our school, but it would also be to meet the mandates of a checklist. And the desired outcomes of Teach and Affirm would be to recognize schools that fulfill a third of a list of criteria. And I'll just read one or two of the criteria, but one of them is a school non-discrimination policy in line with New Jersey Department of Ed standards, programming about LGBT issues during the Week of Respect, which happens to be this week. Unfortunately, we didn't have much time to talk about that, but I wanted to bring that up. And another item on this checklist would be a dress code that is neither strictly gendered. In other words, it doesn't say that cross-dressing is against school code, nor shaming of a particular gender. In other words, it doesn't say that girls can't wear leggings, which unfortunately is an item that does exist in some districts. So I think this would be a step in the right direction to make our schools a healthier, safer environment for the LGBTQ students. And I would hope that everyone would agree and that we could put together, potentially, a committee or a group of people that would be able to go through these different checklist items and see if we, in fact, do deserve this Teach and Affirm accreditation. And if we do, I think, like I said, it would be a step in the right direction because there are issues that we do have in our district that we probably should address because they are detrimental to student health overall. The Week of Respect, that is one item that I wanted to speak about in new business because it seems to have flown completely under the radar, not only in this meeting but in everything that I'm hearing back from my students. And I have a high schooler, a middle schooler, and a Bartle student. There seems to be some confusion about what the Week of Respect is. And in the high school in particular, it seems that they're understanding the Week of Respect to be about the concept of respect. And that includes teachers and students, respect for teachers, respect for other students in a very generalized sense. But the Week of Respect is a week in particular for discussing issues that are brought about when there is disrespect to the LGBTQ community. Unfortunately, there seems to be some issue with that. I can't speak to the other schools, but I do know that there is some work to be done and I'm looking forward to doing it. And this Teach and Affirm program looks to be a step in the right direction. So I hope that we can put this on an agenda in the future.
Can I ask you a question, Michelle? Are you saying the Week of Respect is only for issues of LGBT?
The Week of Respect is a week that we dedicate to highlight issues that arise in schools concerning LGBTQ misrepresentation or underrepresentation or just general misunderstanding of what those letters represent.
But is it only for that community?
Yes, the Week of Respect is specific to that community. It is not a general...
I've just never heard that and I work in schools, so that's...
I've never, I've never heard of that.
It's not what we do in New Brunswick, I can tell you that.
Okay. Well, I'd be happy to talk with you about it.
That would be fine. I just, that's news to me.
Okay. There is a really wonderful website that I can direct you to. It's a Garden State Equality, a group, which is vital to the HIB policy, actually, that was enacted under, I think it was Governor Christie's first year in office that it was passed. And the reason for that movement and that policy being legislated was because of Garden State Equality. And they have lots of information about the Week of Respect. And there are activities that they offer to administrators and to teachers for classroom activity. And, yeah, the Week of Respect, it seems unfortunately to be misunderstood. And I'm not sure if this is the case, but I was told that the entire month of October is LGBTQ History Month, which I was not aware of. So...
It's also Hispanic Heritage Month.
Yes, and there is, well, there's a number of different things that October represents. But these are some gaps that I can see in our district that it would be important to address. So I think that the Teach and Affirm checklist would be a really good thing for us to look at and I hope that everyone agrees.
Talk about it our next meeting or what's the actual...
The teen center would be the right place to...
Are we talking, referring to the Week of Respect specifically?
Oh, no, I was, I was trying to ask, sorry, about the accreditation you were discussing.
The Teach and Affirm.
Teach to Inform.
That's something that the board would do? Is it something the administration does? Is it up to the district?
Yeah, it looks like the...
I'm sorry, your phone is very small.
I know, it's such a tiny, I'm sorry, my computer is not working here.
If I may just, that's something I'd be glad to speak to some members of the board about. We could also, I mentioned, I believe, to you in a conversation that I had been speaking with the Hetrick Martin Institute, which is an advocacy group for LGBTQ youth. And I'm sure there's something we could do there together to provide support mechanisms.
And the checklist that she spoke about, we meet all of those, to my knowledge. Okay.
I'm not sure if that's true.
Which one would not be true?
Well, the last bullet point, just, you know, there are several others, but a health curriculum that addresses students with disabilities. As far as I know, we do not have a health curriculum implemented at Bartle at all. And that was another item that I wanted to bring up in new business. For two years now, we've been lacking a health program. Somehow, the staffing juggling that was happening over the last two years did not provide for a health instructor. So the health curriculum was tasked to the classroom teachers to be folded into science. Of course, that never became part of the science curriculum because the science curriculum needed to be addressed. So our Bartle students have been without health for two years. And I was hoping that we could look at this in order to start that conversation as well.
And relate that to the conversation about Teach to Inform, potentially?
Exactly, right.
If I may just add one thing. So these are obviously some mid to long-term things we need to address. And I don't mean to pass it off at all. I just mean to assure the board, the community, that the strategic planning process could be one place when we maybe target a goal to be, how do we support, I mean, all of our different populations and potentially the LGBTQ population as well? Try to wrap that into the discussion?
Yeah, that would absolutely fit in there perfectly. And I understand it's a long-term goal because there are several of these bullet points that I think that even if we do meet the requirement, that it would be something that we should, you know, push a bit more to really fully meet the requirement. And I do understand the dress code is another issue that may or may not be something that we could qualify or not qualify. But, so this is, I think, a good starting point. So I appreciate your attention to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just really quickly, I'll mention one other thing. Anna Prairie mentioned, you know, how it's great that we have all these new communications initiatives, but we probably have a lot of families in the district that are not online, do not have access. I just wanted to bring your attention to, Scott, a program that I'll email you the information to. I don't know if you're familiar with it or have heard of it before called Jersey On, which their goal is specifically helping low-income families get connected.
Did you mail that to me?
Yeah, absolutely. It's something I'd mentioned with Israel, but I don't think he, you know, he had a, he had a chance to work that in. But, you know, I'm hoping that this is something that we can take a look at, at how we can get information to our parents, whether we can run a program. I know some districts run their own, run the program through their district of getting parents in and getting parents signed up. So they, not only, it says, you know, their tagline is making affordable internet, low-cost computers, and free digital literacy courses available. So, I mean, that would be, that would be a win-win for our families and our kids on multiple levels. So I will absolutely send you that information.
Thank you. Any other new business?
There was two other items that I wanted to discuss. The first one being related to the Teach and Affirm initiative that I spoke about. There was a troubling flyer that was sent out through the Community Teen Center, which is, as I understand it, the place of safety and help for LGBTQ youth in Highland Park. And I feel that, from what I've understood from other parents and students, that this is, the Community Teen Center is a place that they go to for support. So this flyer that was sent out in conjunction with their help was especially troubling because this was a gendered dance that all Irving and Bartle girls were invited to sign up for. And it was entitled "Me and My Guide Dance." And this was brought to the attention of myself by several other parents. So they, they involved inviting just the girls of Irving and Bartle and they also encouraged the girls to bring a male mentor, an uncle, a father, a grandfather. So this was especially troubling because there are many families that are not going to be included in something that I would hope would be inclusive and celebratory. But because it is gendered, it is going, it's not going to allow for participation of all of our students in some capacity. You know, some families in town and many families in town have one parent and they don't have any other extended family. It's something that bothered me personally, but I think was more troubling that it was, you know, sent out through the teen center. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, Dr. Taylor, because I think this is something that was meant with all the best intentions, but that was unfortunately exclusive. And I don't think that it was meant to be that, but this is part of, you know, being more aware and learning about other families and other cultures and other ways of doing things is that, you know, this type of event is unfortunately exclusive. And so I wanted us to work on our sensitivity about things like this. So that was something that I thought should be spoken about. And also, it sounds like this has been said 100 times before, but I think I should say it again, that I'm also very grateful that the security measure, policy change, or regulation, however we want to call it, was stepped back. But I do think that we do have a serious safety concern in our buildings and it has nothing to do with identification or fingerprinting. We do have regulations and policies on the books that suggest, strongly suggest, that we participate in a more nut-free environment for those students that are very allergic and have, in fact, been sent to emergency rooms because of their allergies. So when we're discussing security in our buildings, I think that this is, you know, should be higher up on the priority list if we're, if we're really concerned about security. Because we do have, in fact, regulations that provide for more security that we are not following. So I think that this is something that I just wanted to raise awareness about, that there are nut-free buildings in other districts where, you know, we're not required to do that in Highland Park. There are nut-free classrooms in other districts. Again, we're not required to do that in Highland Park. But there are several students that I personally know, I'm sure there's more, that will be, you know, experiencing anaphylactic shock if they come into contact with certain food items. And so I would like for us to be proactive in that area of security and safety. So nut-free building would be great, but I don't know that that's something we're interested in doing, but Lynn Hurston Franklin Park do that. Nut-free classrooms are something that South Brunswick, North Brunswick, East Brunswick do for students that are identified as highly allergic. And, you know, there's a lot of conversation going on about nutrition and I think that plays into it as well, that there, we give a lot of messages to our students that they should not be bringing in sugary snacks. They should not be, you know, celebrating with sugary snacks for their birthdays in the classrooms. We have policy about that. But we're selling ice cream and cookies and other things in the cafeteria. And, you know, children need to learn how to make wise choices, but I think children are also very intelligent and they can pick up on hypocrisy a mile away. And don't tell me that I can't have cookies in my lunch from mom and dad when you're selling me cookies in the cafeteria. I think we need to seriously discuss that. I think the kids are on to it. They realize that there is a mixed message.
Linda, do you want, Linda, do you want me to get started on this right now?
Sure, no, I, I do not have a, I have no comment.
Linda doesn't want me to get started on this. I've been saying this for, I've been saying this for four years. I almost cursed right there, but, so.
My daughters came home and said that there are Pop Tarts in their lunch.
I know, I know. Linda and I, Linda and I fight on this. We disagree on it.
I don't fight. I never fight. I may, I may express my opinion in a calm and courteous manner.
Yes.
Just as I am right now.
Yes.
Now, I will back Michelle up on this 100%. I think we need to take a look at this. Again, another long-range, long, long road conversation, but it is, it is preposterous that I can't send cupcakes in with my kids for their birthday, but they can buy cookies every day in the lunch line.
And not just for birthdays. I know that, you know, some of us like to have moderation. And I enjoy baking, as everyone knows. So I will send in a cookie. And I have heard from my own children that they will be reprimanded in the cafeteria because they shouldn't be eating that. I don't think it is a policy. I don't think it is a policy. But I do know that this is something that, there's mixed messages being sent to students and that was my point. And, you know, when it's nutrition that we're discussing, that's one thing. It's not a safety or security issue. When we're discussing food allergies, which are vastly different, you know, you cannot be deathly allergic to soy. You can be deathly allergic to peanuts and tree nuts. So there's a distinction to be made and I think that we should take a really serious look at what the differences are and, you know...
I could say that on tomorrow's leadership team meeting agenda is our nut allergy policy, or protocols, not so much policy. So we are going to discuss that tomorrow as principal supervisor.
Thank you.
And the very last thing is that I wanted to see if we could put together a committee of parents and board members to take a look at the transgender policy and to also rewrite what Strauss Esme has given us from start to finish. Because I think that, as we have heard from, represented from Garden State Equality in our board email recently, the policy that was given to us by Strauss Esme is clearly unhealthy for the population that it's meant to serve. So I think that we can really take the lead on this in Highland Park and I would be proud to be a member of that committee. And I'm sure that Ann has been working on the transgender policy as well to look at how, to improve it, but I'm nominating Ann, I guess, without even asking her permission. But I think that would be your step in the right direction again.
As you saw from my response back, if they have a boilerplate policy, I think that would be the best thing to do is for the board to start, to start there and then solicit input once we've put, once we've put in the language that we find acceptable.
No, I just want to be clear, the boilerplate policy coming from GSE, not from Strauss Esme.
That's what, that's what I'm saying, yes. That's what I'm saying, yes.
But the one thing that I would say is we would need to vet all of this...
With our attorney, yeah.
...with Jonathan, because I think that we're... I understand what the issues are. I think we're on thin ice when we start to discuss cutting parents, even non-supported parents, out of a process. I think it leaves us lonely. So I think we need to talk to the attorney about what our options are.
Sure. I think Jonathan could do a good job of vetting or, you know, fleshing all of that out.
Yeah. But first, we need something to show them, so feel free to take the lead on that.
Okay.
And, you know, present something to the policy committee.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
I have one short question or comment for Darcy. That program that you're gonna send to Dr. Taylor?
Mm-hmm.
You'll do all that background checking about the privacy issues?
It's...
This was a big question with the...
But they're not collecting data or anything. They're providing... they're helping people get online.
It's just a question. I'm sorry. It's just a question. I'm just bringing it up, because it was brought up before, about the Leggett...
Linkit.
Linkit.
But it's two separate things. This is an organization that's helping families get their own connectivity in their own home. It's not something that they're providing data... they're not providing data to Jersey On. Jersey On is helping families get connected to the internet, helping them purchase low-cost computers. It's a separate animal.
I just thought it was a reasonable question. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Is there any other new business? Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Oh, sorry. No, I don't get that.
No, you can't get that.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing as there's no public comment, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.